Good morning and welcome. None of us up here have been able to see an elected official, so we'll just welcome everyone as special guests. Thanks for being here. Marshall, if you'll bring the list forward. At this time I will call the November 13th Paulding County Board of Commissioners Work Session to order. We are always privileged to have Chaplain Joey Deeks here with us from the Sheriff's Office to bring us our invocation and to lead us into place of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you so much for having us here again. We appreciate always opportunity. A verse this week is in John 12:26 that says, "If any man serve me, let him follow me; where I am there shall also my servant be. If any man serve me, him will my Father honor." And thinking upon that is, we go through life and everything that bleeds is God, we know that He will honor us later, amen. So let's pray. Father, we love you and again, we thank you so much for all the blessings of life. We thank you for this great county and state that we live in, Father. We appreciate everything that everybody that works here, Lord, they put into it. We know there's a lot of problems, Father, here. There's so many things plaguing our society now, Father, with the drugs, the suicides, and all these things. But we're so thankful that you've given us people to fight this and to deal with it. It's my prayer today for Paulding County. I pray, Father, that you build a huge hedge around it, Father, and I pray that you bind every force of Satan, Father. I pray, God, that you'd help those that can stand up, step up, Father, praying those that can work, Father, that they'll stand up for the work and the task at hand. And always, we want to praise and honor you, the Lord Jesus Christ, in His name, amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Deeks. The minutes from the October 23rd, 2018, in the work session minutes, in the October 23rd, board meeting minutes are available for review. As you know, Sunday was Veterans Day and yesterday was Veterans Day observed. Usually at our Board of Commissioners meetings, we do recognize veterans and I had a video, but we decided that we would just let veterans stand up today because we have another video about Paulding County. So get in the room and you are a veteran, would you please stand up? So that we will play to watch our positively called, which highlights several of the great Paulding County events we've had this holiday.
Earl Duncan Park at Paulding Meadows is home to the popular Paulding Meadows Arts and Crafts Festival held annually each September. With a variety of vendors, food, and a host of entertainment, the Paulding Meadows Arts and Crafts Festival is another fun event to check out here in Paulding County.
The Heritage Festival has been going on for about fifteen years and this is where we invite all of the youth in this community to come in and display their wagers and make a little money at the same time. Hello, honey, for the museum.
The Trick or Treat Village is the perfect place to bring children of all ages for a day filled with fun activities and to even do a little trick-or-treating. With plenty of fun groups to visit, games, hayrides, and even a kids' costume parade, the Trick or Treat Village should be on your list of things to do during the fall and Halloween season. Plus, you never know who you will see trick-or-treating here at the Village. This year's Village will host as large a group to ever participate with thirteen civic church and nonprofit groups, seventeen corporates, and seven county departments represented. There will be approximately three hundred and twenty-five volunteers, twenty-two individual groups, and fifteen total activity areas, including a family-friendly hayride.
Good stuff. No Pepper is Type 1 Diabetes Awareness Month. And yesterday, some staff had the privilege of having the Youngs come by the office and took some pictures. Brylee Young is eight-years-old now and she is here with her mom and dad, Bobby and Ashley. And as we read the part of the proclamation, we encourage them to come back today. And so they're here today and I'm going to ask Bobby and Ashley and Brylee to come forward and Brylee's brave enough to even read some of the proclamation to us. So if y'all will come forward at this time. Just come right up here and we're going to plant this microphone around. She's going to be reading the same thing, it's all this proclamation.
Diabetes affects twenty-nine point one million people, nine point three percent of the population in the United States, and is a serious disease for which there is no known cure and which is the seventh leading cause of deaths by disease in the United States. And type 1 diabetes is an incredible incurable autoimmune disease in which a person's pancreas stops producing insulin a hormone that enables people to produce energy from food. It occurs when the body's immune system attacks or destroys the insulin-producing cells in the pancreas called the beta cells. Its onset that nothing to do with diet or lifestyle, there is no prevention for type 1 diabetes, and at present, no cure, and more than eight thousand children and currently an unknown number of adults in Georgia that live with type 1 diabetes. And an increase in community awareness of risk factors and symptoms related to type 1 diabetes can improve the likelihood that people with type 1 diabetes will get the attention they need before suffering with devastating complications of this disease. And the ultimate goal is to find a cure for type 1 diabetes.
So we, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November as Type 1 Diabetes Awareness Month in Paulding County, and tomorrow is the Type 1 Diabetes Awareness Day. So we're so proud that y'all would come in today and help us be more informed about type 1 diabetes, and we've got some flowers for you. And speaking of Commissioner Pavis, he recently was awarded by the ACCG with an accomplishment and the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, or Georgia's County Association, recently presented county officials with their certificates for the completion of their continuing education requirements within the lifelong learning academy. Recipients were recognized for their accomplishments during a luncheon at Jekyll Island's Commission Center, and Ron Davis was one of the many county officials who received recognition during the conference. So Ron, we congratulate you. Way to go. The Board of Commissioners would like to present a Public Safety Appreciation Award to Detective Steve Sorles and Detective Sean Lipstruth with the Sheriff's Office for their continued effort in the teen suicide intervention and work with schools, counselors, and parents. Colonel Hutton is going to come forward and jump with this presentation.
I apologize, the sheriff had a committee board meeting for the drug task force, so I'm going to do my best to fill in for them. The Sheriff's Office would like to recognize Detective Sean Lipstruth and Detective Steve Sorles for their hard work and their dedication. Detective Lipstruth has been with the Sheriff's Office since 2007 and with the Juvenile Investigation Division since 2012. Detective Sorles has been with the Sheriff's Office since 2014 and with the Crimes Against Children Investigation Division since 2016. Both detectives have been working collectively under the supervision of Major Ava Davis, Lieutenant Starry Kilgore, and Lieutenant Tracy Parker to form the high-risk victims unit. As members of the matched task force, FBI Metro Atlanta Child Exploitation, and the Georgia Statewide Human Trafficking Task Force, they have attended numerous courses in online based learning dealing with human trafficking, commercial sexual exploitation, and child abduction. Detective Sorles and Lipstruth are also dealing with juveniles who have either threatened or attempted suicide. They will follow up after the juvenile has an encounter with law enforcement or school counselors to ensure parents are taking the threat serious and a doctor has assessed the juvenile. They also provide information to assist these families in receiving help. With this being a growing issue amongst our youth, the predators will use this, use their vulnerability to victimize them, make them high-risk victims. Detective Sorles and Lipstruth have gone above and beyond their normal duties as detectives truly caring about our community. We want them to know they are appreciated and their hard work is not in vain. Thank you both, gentlemen. Along with your certificates, Sergeant Henson also has a contact with Texas Roadhouse and they give y'all a certificate as well for proceeding this award. Have it be. Thank you.
Come on. Come on, folks. Wow. So. Invited guests will have non-bid awards and discuss actions to award software purchase an amount of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand seventy-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents to the lowest bidder. SHI International and Ms. Pollard, Mr. Lyons, bring up a little more about this award.
Good morning. Every three years, we have to go out for the Microsoft License Agreements, and this is, the license was completed in 2015, so this will complete this process for the next three years. This was a budgeted expense. The licenses have increased in cost from previous years as technology generally does. So unless you have any questions, we are requesting a warrant to the low bid of two SHI in amount of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand seventy-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents for an annual cost of two hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars a day.
Do I have any, Ms. Lyons?
I must weigh in a couple of things, given the opportunity. Just for clarification, the Microsoft Office licenses are Microsoft Office Word and Excel Powerpoint Access, which all of our departments use. Also, it is the SQL Server licenses, the server licenses, the email server license. So it's things that we use every minute of every day, 24/7 across the county. As Ms. Pollard mentioned, this price is divided over three years, equal payments. There was a slight increase this year. Couple were due to Microsoft changes in their structure. They increased costs across the board on all their licenses, which was an increase to us as well. And then they had to change in their structure where their licensing core instead of processor, a single processor can and usually does have one cores. So now we're in essence paying more for those licenses. Internally, we've also had some increases. We put on staff last year, each one of those employees had to have a server license, exchange license, and Microsoft Office added to their computers, so that was an increase. And then we've also switched over from standard server licenses to the data center licensing that allows us to move servers around, virtual servers around to other hosts in the event the host just needs a little bit of processing power. So gives us a little bit of leverage in keeping the processes running as high as possible. It was budgeted item, so our recommendation is to approve.
The question is, how many bids did you get on that? Because I don't think, we got several backup.
There were a total of five bids submitted, and SHI was roughly a hundred thousand dollars lower. It was quite a bid, lower than the other ones.
Can you, when you go back after the meeting, can you email us those bids?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I don't believe they were in the backup, but we got backup twice this time of data backup, but I never did see the bid.
You'll have it for two of them?
Okay, no problem. All right. Thank you.
I will. Reports from committees and departments today. The elections team has had a very exciting month, and the director is Ms. Dieter Holden and she's got her holtin' beard, but I'm sure she's got something exciting to say to us.
Yes, we're very excited about the turnout that we've had. That's what I want to talk to you about today. We saw historical numbers, and we feel that historical numbers stress me. But I wanted to talk to you about, we've had so many things going on. I get phone calls every day and people asking who won the election. Well, I honestly can tell you I don't know at this point, hopefully this week. Let's tell them that the back a few minutes ago that we, I go to bed every night and I get a news alert, and then I got one last night before I went to bed about a judge's rule now that we can't certify until Friday. So this election is still very much active. We have taken care of our provisionals. We did that yesterday with a panel. So we are right where we need to be. We're just waiting for the go-ahead to put this one to rest and get ready for a runoff. As far as the numbers go, we had a sixty-two point zero five percent turnout, which is absolutely amazing, and I want to thank our voters. What I want to thank my staff mostly for is yes, we took a big chance and we closed three early voting locations and we brought everyone here. We started voting on October the 15th and we stopped voting on November the 2nd. The first day, we voted over seventeen hundred people, and that's when I brought them into the office and I said buckle down, this is going to be an amazing election. The last day of November 2nd, we voted nearly thirty-two hundred voters. So the total early voters that came to this location and went through that cafeteria was, excuse me, thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-four. We never had to wait over one hour. That was even when they were lined up on the last day to the back parking lot. So that says a lot for my staff. We had three thousand three hundred and fourteen paper ballots that we ran through Tuesday. I thought I was going to be smart and get ahead of the game, and we started opening those at two o'clock, and we were still opening those at nine o'clock. So that, there's a lot of, that was a lot of excitement there. We had over two hundred and fifteen, I think that was the final number we had, of ballots that had to be duplicated because they were torn, they were folded incorrectly, and that took several hours to do. Normally, those of you that's been with me for a long time in elections, you know the first thing that we report is paper absentee ballots. That was the last thing we reported on Tuesday night. So that just, that was a long process, and all those people that were involved in that, they were sequestered from two o'clock until about nine forty-five because we couldn't let the results go out until we had everything properly processed. On Election Day, we saw an amazing turnout of twenty-five thousand one hundred and twenty voters that chose to go out to their polls, which leads to a real score subject. And I want to say this publicly, sheltered only when we hear you, and we're working to get you to where you don't have to stand a month or two and a half hours. They were our number one turnout of the day. They voted a total of three thousand nine hundred and forty-three voters in their precinct. They were long lines, our board is going to regularly visit that, but we just have nothing in that area. And I'm pleading with all of you, with the public, please, please, any suggestions you have, we got to do something in that area, and we would appreciate that. There again, the teamwork, the encouragement, I mean, there's people that work in other departments that amazed me because when all this starts happening with us, they're calling us, what can we do to help you? And this little voice kept going off in my head, and it was Frank Baker, because he always says to us at the beginning of every staff meeting, my name's Frank Baker and I'm your friend. And Frank, thank you. He comes down and says, "Excuse me, please, I've been here for you." And he says, "I appreciate you, and that makes more than people ever know, because we are a team, and we have to get past all of this division, and we got to move forward." And I appreciate you, Frank. And with that being said, I want to give you some comparative numbers. In 2014, the last time the governor was on the ballot, we had a forty-eight percent turnout. And on Election Day, we only voted nineteen thousand voters. In person, we voted fifteen thousand, a little bit over. So it goes to show that people are voting, they are concerned, they do care. On October the 20th, we were finished with our first Saturday voting, and I gave some numbers out. We had six days left. We had voted at that time seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty-eight early voters. In six days, we doubled that number. We have not been home, we have slept in our chairs, we've slept under our desks, but yeah, we got through it. So I want to thank the voters, the county, my staff, just, it was an amazing election, and we're ready to roll up our sleeves and go into a runoff and get this year behind us. So thank you to everyone who has helped us out, I appreciate it.
Are y'all going to Broward County Board?
We have that one happening.
I'd just like to take another minute, Douglas. That's so much hard work preparation to have their whole team stand up. Thank you all, and there are a lot more volunteers than, I think we're going to have a little fun tomorrow, so look forward to that. Colonel Hutton is going to bring us an update on the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
See if I can get the power. I know y'all have a book, but this way the other folks can see it. This is the sheriff's report from January through October of 2018. On the, I believe in y'all's books, there should be a highlighted sheet there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And then the rest of it's the detailed sheets for y'all to look at later on. The first thing I was going to talk about is our overdoses in the county. This year, since January through October, as I stated, we've had twenty Narcan shots administered just by the sheriff's deputies. Just to kind of familiarize us with that, Narcan is designed to reverse the effects of an opioid overdose. These particular shots that the deputies carry on, you know, we're not medical, we're not EMS, but the opioid crisis is getting worse. We were actually able to obtain these through a grant program. These auto injectors are what they're called. It actually, when you pull it out, I should have brought one for a demonstration, but it actually gives you step-by-step instructions. And we do put the deputies through training with it, and they carry it in their breast pocket so that they have it on at all times, and they can administer it when needed. Each one of those, if we had to purchase them, are roughly about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty bucks. One unit comes with two auto injectors and a training device, and that one box is two hundred and something bucks if we had to, if we had to purchase them. So through a grant, we've been able to do that, we've been doing that since 2016, if I'm not mistaken. To continue on, we've had six heroin overdoses, four that are still unknown, we're waiting on toxicology reports, and eight that are opioid overdoses. And in total, we've had sixty-six overdoses or poisoning calls. Sorry. All right, the deputies have patrolled two million five hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-three miles since January. We've had two thousand nine hundred and twelve arrests, two thousand six hundred and twelve traffic citations have been issued. We've had three thousand we've had three thousand three hundred and twenty-nine individuals booked into our facility at the jail, and we've had fifty-three thousand and seventy-three complaints that were responded to through 911. Our high-volume calls, alarms are still up there, we have four thousand six hundred and ninety-eight alarms, most of them being residential. We had two thousand three hundred and sixty-one domestic disputes, we have one thousand four hundred and eighty-three lockouts, those are citizens calling that they've locked their keys in their car. We still do those. A lot of counties don't because of liability. The deputies can damage a car, you know, we're not locksmiths, so slim jim in a car or using a bladder to open the door enough, we can damage vehicles. So they have to sign a release allowing us to do so, but we still do it. We served four thousand five hundred and ninety-eight subpoenas in civil papers so far. We've had five thousand three hundred and thirty-six suspicious incidents persons or vehicles that were either called in or initiated by deputies. We had two thousand one hundred and seventy-four theft by taking, burglary, and enter auto reports. We've had six thousand five hundred and seventy-nine traffic stops, seventy-two DUIs. We've cleared two thousand, we've cleared two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six warrants, there's been nine hundred and thirty-four in the zone patrol request, and we've had one thousand three hundred and twenty-two juvenile incident reports, three hundred and eighty-two, those were assigned to detectives, and we had four hundred and fifty-nine juveniles charged with various juvenile charges. This is not in your packet, and me and the sheriff discussed it and we try to keep y'all abreast of what's going on at the Sheriff's Office. And right now, currently, we have twenty deputy positions that are vacant and we have ten detention officer positions that are vacant. The deputies just did a PT assessment this morning out here at Veterans Park, trying to get some new detention officers through the process and getting them on. We're having a lot of applicants apply, but they're, through our assessment process, we're washing them out. And we're also washing them out through our jail training program. You know, this is a career that is not for everybody. So we, our applicant pool is, we've got people applying, but they're not meeting the standards that we require of them. So, but we're continuing to push and fight through that, so. And just to add this in there, we're hired. So I put our attention, our jailers, their salaries, deputy sheriff's salary up there. These are not all of our benefits, obviously, but they're some of the ones that stand us out from other agencies and whatnot. So I appreciate it. If y'all have any questions, I mean, you want to let me answer.
Is everybody growing a beard?
Not quite. We do have no shave October, November at the Sheriff's Office for personnel that don't have to wear a uniform to help raise funds for our benevolent fund and our flower fund. So it goes over pretty well, except for the guys in uniform. Now, if we have to wear a uniform, we have to shave, so.
Thanks so much, Ron.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all, I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. As you know, the fiscal year ends June the thirtieth and Ms. Pollard, the Finance Director, is gonna bring us the 2018 budget document.
But for 2017 and 2018, we extended, included more information in our budget document and applied for the distinguished budget award through the Government Finance, Government Finance Officer Association, and we were awarded in 2017 and 2018. We have recently completed the 2019 packet and we are submitting it for the award as well. So what makes this budget different from the ones that approved back in August? Absolutely nothing, except for it contains more information. This is more of a, it demonstrates that the document is more of a planning and policy document as opposed to strictly numbers. We had in front of you in August was strictly numbers. These numbers are no different. Each year, we're able to add more and more information to this document and one of the final requirements of application is that we make this document available to the public and that's what, on behalf of the Finance Department, I'm here to do today. We want to notify the commission and the public that the document is available at polycity.com under the Finance Department. And this basically gives you the additional information, talks about our budget process, it talks about how our forecasts are completed, talks about what revenues have changed, how the funds are being expensed, and it talks about our capital investment plans for the next couple of years. So those are some of the additional information in this document that you wouldn't find in the other one.
Any questions? Thank you. You're welcome. Last but not least, we're honored again to have with us Eric Johnson, the Director for Compass Program Services, to give us an update on jail construction.
Good morning, Chairman, fellow commissioners.
Good morning.
See if I can do this as effectively as chief. Hopefully this is on. We'll see. There we go. I'm an engineer, not a marketing person. Bear with me. Of course, there we go. Fantastic. Thank you for having us again. Amy Tisnichek, who's the Lead Program Manager for CPS, is here with us, as well as Tim Collins and Lance Painter with Turner. So let's get started. Again, all the information is on polycity.com. If you please see a picture of construction in progress right now. We'll get into a little bit more here shortly. There are blue skies still out there somewhat, it's kind of messy out there right now. But anyway, let's get into the budget. So the last time we spoke, we came to you with not such good news on rock out there and some other changes that were happening out there. We'll get into those here in a minute, but just from an overall, I'm gonna try to stay to this presentation because usually I get all over the map and everybody gets confused. So there's a lot to go over, so I'll just go through it sequentially. So what we have here is an update where you'll see that we have taken contingency, actually from some money from the furniture fixture and equipment we've met with the Sheriff's Office and we feel like in lieu of $2.7 billion. And by the way, one of the folks on staff with us is the retired Chief Deputy of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, who has done a lot of this, who has been trying to help advise on these particular issues as well. So we moved money from there up into the construction as well, in which the funding of a million one fifty for COR-06, at the bottom of the page, you'll see that there is amount of $368,275 that is above and beyond what we have in the construction project right now. We'll get into that in detail here in a minute. But that does provide that we have $250,000 still left in owner contingency up there as well. So as you can also see down below, Turner's done an excellent job in mitigating a lot of these costs. We're gonna, we're still out there not accepting some cost, the normal wear and tear on a project of this type, okay? So it's a daily process out there, which a lot of you have been involved in. Scott Crane for one, for sure, and also the Sheriff's Office. So below there, you'll see the original construction contingency, which is the money that is inside Turner's guaranteed maximum price for things that we watched over with them and things that I've learned inherently in the documents, that they didn't bid. And currently, they are a little shy of $780,000 still in construction contingency in their GMP. So that's, that's still money to be spent on the project. What doesn't get spent gets returned to, you know, county. So we still feel that's a conservative number, but we can't tell them they have, and we'll show in this, that they did provide a good bit of what that 1.3780 was about $300,000 towards the performance documents, which we worked with them on and we felt like they should have had in the GMP as opposed to going in the owner contingency, they took it out of their construction contingency. So, anyway. So let's get into the cost impacts. Obviously, the rock, where the original number was 10,900 yards of rock was what Turner estimated. We think we're gonna be closer to around 5,000. NOVA's been out there every single day watching over this whole thing, obviously, and whatever rock is there is counted by the yard and assessed from a cost standpoint of where they are taking it. We've been working with the county excellently and been able to mitigate a lot of that on site, which has saved a tremendous amount. We are going to thankfully take some of that rock and fill Eric's hole over there at the Training Center, that's still over there, so. There might be something good that comes out of this rock, at least personally. So we think that number, we know that number's gonna come down. That number may be closer to four, maybe 450,000 dollars, that rock. Okay, we'll get into the approval of this contract amendment number two, which is what we're here for, as it relates to that number. Pre-cast panels, again, there's some slides down below, we'll talk about that in a second, but that was something that came out of the City of Dallas. Performance documents as well. Within that performance document number, there's $310,000, which was a result of, again, City of Dallas's comments on trying to leave the hill there and all those trees there, okay? And I will just tell you, and it's on slide here personally, I was the one who got the first meetings together with Bruce Coyle with Dallas back in January of eighteen with all the NOVA officials other than city manager, the political officials, city manager, and two folks below that. Went through the permitting process, all the costs associated with it, everything else, and these issues never came up. So this is in the actual approval process, trying to get an LDP, and Scott assisted well with that and gave it a point where, I know the sheriff had to go to that planning meeting just for them to accept what we were actually building up there. That never came up till we actually went in there for apartment approval in Port Mac. So, anyway, so you see that, and that's the number of one million five eighteen. If you added it to the original number of 60 million one hundred, that's how you came up with the number of 61 million six eighteen two seventy-five, which is what we're, which we are asking approval not to exceed that number. And that's critical because we're still working on that number, the contract amendment number two. We're not gonna come to you with that bigger number, we just wanted to get approval up to that amount, but it won't be reduced because I know the rock is gonna be less. Okay, so when you approve it today, that number is gonna come down, but that's not the contract amendment number two we're gonna break to you for 61 million six eighteen, it will be less. We're not gonna put money into their contract, knowing that we're not gonna spend it and somehow or another get it back down. It's like giving your child 10 bucks to go to the football game and you know they only need three. Seven dollars coming back, at least not my kids. Anyway, so here's a little bit of, and there's a lot more detail on this rock than you see right there, but that's a quick summary. There's a lot of sweat and boots on the ground mitigating this issue. It's right there, 4220. We're doing a little bit more out there, we think it's probably gonna come in around 5,000. That estimate is from NOVA. Pre-cast panels, I've touched on that a little bit, didn't come up till the actual review process, but we're 100% done with these parts, okay? And again, that was that, we met with them that day when it was really icy, people couldn't get around, we all got to that meeting. So it's kind of personally upset me when all that stuff came up, that's okay. Performance documents, again, here's more of the detail, you'll see right there, that earthwork and site utilities number of 310,000, that's a direct result of working, the county working with the city to keep that hill back there with all those trees to try to shield. That was our first thing that we were gonna try to do, not do the pre-cast, and then they said, well, we can do the pre-cast too. So we wound up having to do both of them because, you know, eventually those trees probably may come down and you will be able to see them. So, anyway, that's the performance documents. And that's kind of it right there. So I would like to say, I think Wakefield Beasley, Turner, the whole team has done an excellent job. If you look at, and we've gotten questions on the performance documents, what was left off, really, it's around $300,000 on a $60 million construction project of stuff that was not on the drawings that Turner didn't price. That's not much. I think that is excellent. A lot of these costs, if you go through them, are stuff that were not associated with the design of this facility and the process, okay? Schedule update, as you can see, foundations, not a whole lot going on out there today. But foundations are going in, structural pre-cast, you see that coming up. It's really kind of nice to see once you get the foundations in how quickly it does come up. So you'll be seeing a lot more in the months to come. And final completion again is end of April 2020 and we're, every day we're trying to better that game. There's an elevation. Any questions? Sorry, trying to stay on task on the slides.
There's some kind of location that you can put rocks in, call it Eric's Hole?
Eric's Hole. I'm glad the sheriff's not here, he'd probably be up here and he's always threatened to put me in there. As you remember, some of y'all, we had a training center and so we actually, if you remember, we raised that, the actual training center, 10 feet to stay out of the rock. And as you remember, that was one concept we're thinking about doing here, but when we saw how much rock there really wasn't, that went away very quickly. If you remember, that rock number we first came to you was like 1.5, we think it's gonna probably be four to 450,000 dollars. But yes, there's a big hole there, we get dirt and put up the backfill to raise everything up, so yeah, it's, well, that's my hole, but it is my hole out there, about to fill it.
You'll hear from me in December also?
Yes, sir. I'll come every two weeks if you'd like.
Good report. I would like to say a couple things because I've had a couple phone calls after our last one, the sheriff and I have talked. The pre-cast design that we're putting on the walls, I think not only is the City of Dallas asking for something, I think it's important because there's some things you can, when you get to building a house, you can update your kitchen, you can do things to it, there's some things that you can't and that's one of them that would cost us a lot. So I think that's gonna be good not only for our campus and for the City of Dallas, for our community, and I think that's very important. And I know everybody's worked hard to do that and I think it's a very worthwhile amount of money to spend on that project. I do have to say that I don't want the City of Dallas getting all the criticism about the trees and the hill because I have war stock during now with it from day one and these commissioners know. I say we're not taking away all the trees, we're just not gonna do it. If somebody needs to do it 10, 20 years from now for something, that's fine, that'll be up to them. But I said we're not gonna do it, we're not gonna have a project that doesn't look good. And if we don't need to do it now, we're just not gonna do it. And Scott's done good. Scott, I'd like to thank you publicly for what you've done on the project, you and Bruce Coyle, but you, as far as I'm concerned, have been the person that's kept me updated, kept this board updated, but you've been boots on the ground out there and that's what we need when we do projects like this. We don't need to think that we can, did a project, hire somebody to do it, and then turn our backs until it's time to cut the ribbon, because that's not the case. So job well done, Scott, a lot of work still in front of us. Thank you for the trees and the hill and we'll continue on. Eric, thanks for the report.
Yes, sir.
And look forward to hearing from you in December, maybe we'll try out next, this coming weekend.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have no one who's signed up for public participation on agenda items, under consent agenda, discuss action on eight consent agenda items, which requirement that I've Consider agenda item number one is to approve the request of the Polk County Sheriff's Office to retire the surplus Deputy Charles Mitchell Hudgens service weapon. Office to retire the surplus Deputy Charles Mitchell Hudgens service weapon, a Glock 21 SF45, serial number SWF569, present to Deputy Hudgens upon his retirement of 16 years with the Pauling County Sheriff's Office. And number two, approve the request by the Pauling County Sheriff's Office to retire or surplus Lieutenant Kathy Etheridge's service weapon, a Glock 21 SF45, serial number TYN937, and present to Lieutenant Etheridge upon her retirement of 21 years of service with the Sheriff's Office. Number three is approve the request by the Pauling County Sheriff's Office to retire surplus Corporal Linda Kennon's service weapon, a Glock 21 SF45, serial number TYN937, and present to Corporal Kennon upon her retirement of 21 years of service with the Sheriff's Office. Number four is action to authorize the chairman to approve a lighting services agreement, prepayment of costs to the Georgia Power Company in the estimated amount of $64,688 for streetlight installation on Burge Valentine Drive. Number five is action to authorize the chairman to approve an actual cost utility relocation agreement with the Georgia Power Company in the estimated amount of $173,123.43 for Rockin Creek Road over the Rockin Creek Bridge construction project. Number six is approve the proposed Pauling County Board of Commissioners work session and board meeting scheduled for the 2019 calendar year. Number seven is approve the proposed application and public hearing dates for the planning commission, the zoning board of appeals, the stream upper development waiver review committee, and the waiver review committee for the 29, for the 2019 calendar year. And number eight is acceptance of subdivision streets for petrol maintenance, Birchwood at Nature Rock, Unit 1, Base 3C, and the Ironwood Trail and the Ironwood Court. Would any commissioners like to place any of these listed consent items on the new business?
I don't have that on me, just to move into new business, but I did just happen to notice the serial numbers, just the number two and three are the same. And this is a title of the sheriff, we need to make sure for the department agenda that we get the, the right serial numbers in the right place.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anything I want to move, but I wanted to ask Rebecca, did we check the school calendar? You're word good? And I always say that every year, I won't be here next year, it doesn't affect me, but it affects our staff, and that's why I say if people say, well, why, what's the big deal about it? Because those February breaks and those September breaks affect our staff. We're good.
Yeah, we have two visiting meetings set for next year, and the one is during the fall break, the other one is in January, which is the week of the Martin Luther King holiday. And so, coming back on Tuesday, that's a lot on staff, so we're shifting that to Thursday. Okay? Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Todd. All right, old business we have done. And new business, number one is discuss action to adopt resolution 1854, authorizing the filing of application of the Georgia Department of Transportation, the United States Department of Transportation, for a grant for public transportation assistance under Section 5311 of the federal transit laws under Chapter 23 entitled 49 of the United States Code. Paul?
This is manual grant, but we have to file an application with the Georgia Department and it allows us some grants with operational transit vessels that operate out of the system. This grant is on average for about $58,000 toward the cost of that service. And this just authorizes the chairman to sign the documents.
Questions, comments?
Please, time's running different here.
Time's running different here.
Number two is discuss action to approve amendment number two to revise the guaranteed maximum price contract with Turner Construction for an amount not to exceed $61,618. I'm sorry? It's not Paulson, it's over. Discuss action to approve amendment number two to revise the guaranteed maximum price contract with Turner Construction for an amount not to exceed $61,618,275 for construction of the Pauling County Development Center, Mr. Green and Mr. Johnson.
I think Eric's comments pretty much covered, and if Mr. Powell has questions, our corporate, I just want to add a couple of comments. I just want to let you know that we have worked very hard to ensure that the commission is getting what they need to out of this program, and of course, most important, the sheriff office for their function once it's all completed. So, everything we're doing is to be diligent with the funding to make sure that we're getting what we paid for, and we're not paying too much for the things that we're adding. And that's our everyday job. We are out there working very hard, looking at the changes. Turner is, is a good partner, they've worked very hard to keep these costs down, and as we've dealt with some of these changes, I think they've done a good job. In this, in this change we're, we're bringing to you, there are some quantity based changes that we hope we don't have to actually spend the money on. For instance, the rock quantity will come down quite a bit. Also, in site civil changes, there's about $200,000 built in for exporting dirt to the training center. We don't think we're going to need all that, although we would like to fill the entire hole that's over there. We don't want to haul any more over there than we have to. So, we're going to continue to try to keep costs down. A lot of the changes that we dealt with during construction, actually, actually as construction was getting underway, the changes were already in motion from plan B components, things that staff felt needed in this, in this site. A lot of concrete pipe was added back in, higher quality materials, a lot of road patrol items were added in. A good bit of cost that sheriff wanted exactly appreciated because it doesn't pertain to the building and the functions of the building, but things that we felt were necessary for the long-term maintenance of the facility, things that will benefit us in long-term building maintenance concerns, obviously, we've, we've got to take care of this building. And the way the building will look, when I walked into this project a few months on the job, things were already rolling pretty strong, and we realized that the trees were coming down in January, February. That was something the commission had expressed concern about, how this will look, not just the city of Dallas. So, we, we had to throw a lot of changes at, at the designer and civil group and architect to make sure we were not leveling a site that didn't have to be leveled. So, those costs were on the fly, and a lot of them were not fully priced when we launched the first contract with the contractor. They were being priced, we knew they were coming, we didn't know how much they had. So, yes, we, we've been playing catch-up on the pricing. For the most part, all this pricing was done according to the original pricing, it's just extending the quantities where we need the quantities. And I feel very confident we're getting a quality program, and we're not sacrificing what the sheriff operation needs, long-term safety for their facility, and we're going to continue to make sure that with the remaining funds that we're going to get everything in the program on day one when they open the door, and we're not pushing off something that we'll have to deal with on a general fund budget later here and come back and ask for more. So, I, I feel good of where we're at now, with the remaining pricing that has to be done with Turner team. I think we're in really good shape. We can have enough cushion up there to carry this number forward. We're glad to answer any other questions.
Again, thanks for your work, you stay, stay on top of all Eric over there.
I think so.
Thank you, Scott. Number three is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract with Shaw Sports Turf through the National Joint Purchasing Alliance. He constructed synthetic turf playing field at Vernice Park at a cost of $521,136.5. Primary usage of this facility will be for special needs playing field. This will be SPOSS funded, a SPOSS funded project, and we're honored to have Mr. Justice here to talk about this very exciting addition to the recreational world.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm honored to, to be able to present it to you. Take you back a few years ago, close to 10 years ago, we constructed our acre park, the original intent was to construct this field there. We're getting it done, you know? I'm excited about it, in particular, pink, for the opportunities that it will present to our user groups. As it states in the language, it is through the National Joint Purchasing Alliance. That to kind of give you a breakdown of that, it's similar to the state contract bids. So, it's already been vetted, it's already been priced. We don't have to go through the bid process to make that happen. So, there's a select group there. Shaw Sports Turf is, is well-known. Done a couple of great big projects that are close to us here and several more in the metro area where this application has been put to work and has proven itself to be successful. The samples that you have, and we've got another one here, what makes this a little bit different from a regular synthetic turf field is we are designing this for our special populations. You know, we, we've worked with Mr. Watts, who I'll introduce in just a second, to make certain that it will be accessible to, to wheelchairs, to strollers, to walkers, and that they will not have the patterns that they might have on, certainly not on regular grass, but on the other synthetic turf fields. The material with the pilings, that's the, that's the surface, the pad that's underneath, and Mr. Watts can give you some more details here in a minute, that firms it up, and that's, that goes underneath this, is a little bit additional cost, but it's something that we, we need to put in there in order to make this work. We're excited about it. If I can first, let me introduce Mr. Jim Watts with Shaw Sports Turf. He can answer way more of the technical questions than I can, if you have any questions for him or for Jim, if you have anything you want to share tonight.
Hey, guys, I'm Jim Watts with Shaw Sports Turf. Happy to be here answering any questions you ask.
Is this like the lake point where you get a thunderstorm and it's later to dry?
Correct, yes, sir. This is, this is actually Lake Point on Stereolith, so you have the impact layer underneath, so it's a little more advanced than what we have at Lake Point, but yes, that's correct. And the reason for the advancement is obviously you need a very stiff underlayment, which that's what this is. Polyethylene underlayment that will support the way the wheelchair and bed persons as well, and you're able to roll the wheelchair alone. Biggest difference is typical sports field, you have to add rubber. The rubber a lot of times will become, you know, for the reason of safety, it's very easy to give glass dick, it's, it's gusts and plowability, it's bouncy. Same time, very difficult to roll with the wheelchair wheels through. All we're going to put in is sand over the top of this, and your safety comes from the padding beneath. So, therefore, it's a very safe, firm, user-friendly product.
Where does the sand go?
Sand goes on the top of the turf, it'll fill it up to stand the turf on.
Okay. What is the life expectancy of this?
Life expectancy is eight years on the turf on the top, 20 years on the padding beneath, so you get two and a half life cycles out of it. Quite frankly, most of your turf will only be out long before it wears out, so most people will replace for 10, but the warranty is eight. The pad is 20, so it's two life cycles. So, the next time that you do replace it, it'll just tear the turf off and there's all turf back on the top. So, you know, your cost is roughly half of that.
Kenny, Kenny, plans for White Oak Somewhere Field?
I hope so.
Different opinions here, you know, on, on those. I think it's important to mention a couple of things here when we're talking about synthetic turf. It is the first one that we will have, you know, in our park system. It is also the first one that doesn't need daily maintenance, doesn't need to be watered, doesn't need to be cut, you know? So, we won't have to dedicate staff hours out there for the most part, other than maybe blowing some leaves around and changing bases and that sort of thing. It is not going to drive our operation expenses to have this. So, you know, a little bit more upfront, a whole lot less on the, on the back end of that. One of the things I think that we, we need to reemphasize is that the primary usage of this field will be for, for our special populations group and our adaptive recreation groups. Britt, would you stand, please? This is Ms. Britt Grillo, she is a member of our staff, she is our adaptive recreation specialist, and, and Britt pretty much holds the key to this, this thing. And we are designing it to where it is multi-use, you know, to where we can, it'll have soccer and lacrosse inlays on it as well. We can play baseball, we can play softball, we can do all those things, but Britt has a, a need for it. Britt's stuff is coming first, you know, so I think it's important that we mention that. The other usage will be coordinated after they approve that first dibs on whatever it is that they want to do there. Want to make certain that, that, that point is mentioned as well. We're excited about it, looking forward to the opportunity. Construction time, Jim, we did approve?
Hit it out by six weeks, that's, that's probably what we need to cut out in your day, some work and, and that.
So, what we're looking at hopefully is being able to plug on this in the spring of 2019.
I just say, thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
You, you and Cease, where you're staff with it, we've, we've done a lot of work on this one, and, and it's a, it's a bit of a long time coming. Do you want to mention the price? Bruce, your help, Jim, your help with the, with the price, the initial list that we had on this was a little bit higher than this number.
That's right.
And so, bringing that number down is, is a good thing for sure. Also, I'll reiterate what Michael said about the priority given for the special needs groups. We're using that, that's not a decision from the recreation department, it's actually from the board. This will be primarily focused to, to the special needs groups and, but because of the inlays, we can, can a little more bank for the buckets and we can use it at other times. The priority there is, is not a, it's not a decision at the department level, it is coming, coming from the board. Just wanted to be clear on that, but I appreciate you, Michael. The best effort that's done into this. Also, got some citizens who've been influential in helping us get this here. Miss Duncan's here, it's good to see you. Some others who aren't even here, but I know they're watching online. I came in this morning and accidentally made a comment about calls, and this is one of those things that sometimes you come in, you, you, you need to vote on something, and sometimes you have to vote on something, but today I'm excited to get to vote on this, and looking forward to that. But thank you for all the work you've done.
Thanks for the opportunity to present it to you.
May be a good opportunity, also good people in the room and the people that watch on Comcast. You know, SPOSS, it, some of it comes from people outside the county, but you know, what a, what a great example of how it can be used effectively, otherwise we might not have the funds for it.
We have some samples here, and Mr. Watts has a larger sample, if anybody's interested going around for a few minutes and see if we can ask you questions. Thank you.
It's interesting that you said we don't have to cut this because Miss Duncan told me that if we did it, she'd cut the grass.
I don't want to ruin it.
So, there you go. Your job's done.
If I have to, I will.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number, number four is discuss action to adopt resolution 1855, amendment in the library services chapter, that's chapter 38, and the parks and recreation chapter, chapter 15, of the Pauling County Code of Orders, is Mr. Bailey.
Good morning. Pleasure to be up here. We always talk in Team Pauling about three things. Where we've been, where are we now, and where we need to be. And so, with that philosophy, we're continuously evaluating our procedures and our policies, our departments, where we're at, the scope of what we do, and that's kind of what leads us here today, is knowing those evaluations. This resolution would do a couple of things. The main thing is that it will allow for the library system to be a part of a new department, an existing department, which is Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation will now be Parks and Recreation Cultural Affairs if it surpasses this resolution, and library system would be a part of that as a division. And so, with that, there's a couple of other changes. One of the things I wanted to point out, especially with the library code that's being proposed today, it's like many things that we see, that typical code section hasn't been changed. been changed since 1987. I have some shoes, I think, in my closet that are a little bit older than that, barely. But that's a long time. And so this cleans up a little bit of language in there that we need to address. When that code section was passed, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Skipper, and I appreciate all your work on this, I think there was one library at the time. And it made reference to a bound edition of history, and you know, now we have digitized mobility and some other things. So just kind of some housekeeping on that, but also a consolidation, making this a division rather than a standalone department. So on behalf of to answer any questions, I would like to thank a number of people who've helped with this. This has been something that we've been studying for several months now. And so I want to thank Brian Acker, our Human Resources Director. I think I saw Brian back there. He and I have been working on this quite some time. And, and all of the commissioners, I know I've had many, many discussions with all of y'all. Mr. Skipper, you and I have had a lot of discussions. And I also want to thank our interim Library Services Coordinator, Laura Stuckey, who is one of our branch managers. And she and her managers have all been working on this with me and are very delighted of the possibility of making these changes. Happy to take any questions.
I'd just like to say thanks again to Brian, Brian, your money, for your institutional knowledge on this, and to all the staff at the libraries. Because Public Cease is doing this today, but this is actually something that's been going on for the last three months. And a lot of work's went into it, a lot of discussion with the board, with the employees out there. So a lot of input. So thank you all for your work, Lonnie. Thank you so much.
Also appreciate Mr. Justice's willingness and taking on the division and all that. I'm very, I know you've added this up, and a lot, a lot's gone into this, and maybe more than we thought was going to go into this. But I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. And yes, Mr. Justice, I do appreciate you taking on this extra responsibility. It's for large structures and 20-something extra people that he hasn't been working with. And so he's, he's agreed to take this on because he's, he's part of Team Paulding, and he wants us to move forward and make the system as best as it can be and make it great. So I appreciate that.
Thank you all for doing. Number five is discuss action to adopt resolution 18-56, revising Section 614B of the Paulding County Code of Orders to reflect the new hours of operations based upon the brunch bill. Mr. Skipper.
I think everyone's aware that the Georgia Legislature put a vote, the counties asked us each in middle county, they wanted to vote on extending hours for what we would call consumption on the premises, but most people think of as restaurant alcohol sales. We did put that on the ballot, it did pass fairly along the margin. So what that does is it extended the hours from 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And so in total, it changes the hours for Sunday restaurant sales from 11 a.m., which is just before noon, until midnight and 12 a.m. on Sundays. And that's what, it's the sole thing that this ordinance does.
A lot of work there, man. Thank you. At the start of the meeting, I mentioned that none of us recognized any elected officials. Over the last hour, 15 minutes, I have noticed one of our school board members, Ms. Kim Cobb. And Kim, we're very glad to have you here. That's the conclusion of our regular business. We do have the requirement for executive session for personnel for potential litigation and, or in acquisition real estate. So I entertain a motion to ignore the executive session for these reasons.
A motion to ignore the executive session for personnel, real estate pending, and potential litigation.
No motion by Commissioner Palanhouse, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collette. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's five oh, and we will adjourn the executive sessions. Okay, I'll call the work session back to order and report that no action is taken ending the executive session. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion, may I adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Davis, second.
Second.
By Commissioner Collette, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Let me just say, we will start the regular sessions at 2 o'clock. Thanks to Rebecca's speedy work. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero, and we adjourn.